Yeah, like I said, I'm a few minutes behind. If, uh, Mr. Merle, would you please, please, in person?
My most gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Lord, we just thank you each day for all the blessings you give us and all the things that you give us that we don't actually ask for. And we just thank you so much for all your love and thank you for your son, Jesus, that died on the cross for these things, for yes, in my name, amen.
Do you want to remain standing with the same pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the government, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, uh, let's see, would you go ahead and, uh, first off, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And, uh, Lucy, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
All right, sir. Merle, here. Eugene?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Mayor Self?
Here.
John?
Here.
Uh, Steve Self, Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody for your attendance tonight. Try to get through all this as quick as we can. But, uh, if you would, please mute or turn your phones off during the duration of the meeting. We'd greatly appreciate it. And everybody's got face covering. We, I know most people have been vaccinated or they're gonna be vaccinated. And, uh, we still want everybody to wear a mask in our meeting, please. Okay, let's, uh, review the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yes, sir. May the 10th of 2021, Mayor Self called to order the regular meeting of the town council at 7:00 PM on April 12th. Well, I, folks, I just left. I knew there was something I missed. Forgot to change my date. On May the 10th, 2021, in the town hall, the invocation was given by Merle Van Cleve. The pledge of allegiance was recited by all. The roll call was had, the following persons were present. Mayor Arthur Self, Councilor's Merle Van Cleve, Eugene Kylie, Brenda Lowe, John King, and Steve Brewer. The minutes from the, uh, let's see, the, let's see, it was for the May 10th. Okay, so the minutes for the May 10th, the May regular meeting were read. Uh, Brenda Lowe made the motion to accept, seconded by Eugene Kylie. Motion carried. The financials for April were given, or for Montecito.
May.
All right, this was regular meeting from May. So, oh, I just got to change all of them. I forgot to change. I used the previous ones to do this. All right, the financials were given. Steve Brewer made the motion to accept him as given. John King seconded, and the motion carried. Steve Brewer, under reports of officers, reported that we are waiting for Blount County to schedule our road work on Smith Mill Road and Copper Hill. Mayor Self noted that our town welcome signs have been replaced by striped king for a total of $250. The town limit signs and street signs for Dean's Ferry have not been replaced. The clerk is to contact Blount County for this. Steve Brewer asked Mayor Self if he had created our budget. Mayor Self said that it would be brought to the next regular meeting. Resolutions and ordinances, Mayor Self noted that Resolution 2021-001, MOU with Jefferson County Commission to participate in the Region 6 debris removal contract was read at the April meeting. Steve Brewer had, had made the motion to accept it as read. Eugene Kylie had seconded this motion, but it worked, but there was no vote on it. This resolution was again presented to the council. Brenda Lowe made the motion to enter this, uh, MOU agreement. Eugene Kylie seconded, vote was unanimous. Mayor Self presented the nuisance ordinance 2021-004. Steve Brewer made the motion to accept it as written. John King seconded, motion carried. A motion to adjourn was made by Merle Van Cleve and seconded by John King. Motion carried. Meeting of John respectfully submitted to the county clerk.
All right, any other corrections or comments?
Changed all the amendments.
The only corrections I saw was the, um, for the minutes and the financials. Should've been May instead of March.
On the nuisance ordinance, we voted on that, didn't we, last time?
Yeah.
Well, she just put that it was the motion carried. She didn't put that it was voted on. Let's say two, um, declarations and, uh, did not say?
Hey, well, the motion carried.
Which is that, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had the, uh, we had the, uh, a motion to accept, and John seconded, and then we voted for the mo, the motion carried. The motion to adopt the nuisance ordinance. Uh, yes. All right, any other questions or comments for the minutes from the May 10th meeting? All right, uh, let's go over the financial reports. And we just keep getting more and more accounts here. All right, uh, first up, I have the rebuild Alabama diesel tax. The beginning balance was, um, $3,860.08. The ending balance was $4,163.62. All right, next up is the Alabama, rebuild Alabama gas tax. Uh, beginning balance is $11,965.15. Our ending balance is $12,855.63. All right, uh, next up is the capital improvements fund. The beginning and ending balance, $16,096.77. All right, next is the moving Blount County forward account. Our beginning balance, $25,462.11. Ending balance is $26,139.43. Okay. Next, we have the four, five, and six road account. Our beginning balance is $12,621.24. Our ending balance is $12,807.25. All right, now the two and seven road account. Beginning balance is $10,043.54. Ending balance was $9,639.92. All right, then the general fund account. Our beginning balance is $32,214.73. And the ending balance is $28,416.66. All right, any questions or comments or corrections needed for the financial reports? All right, we have a motion to accept is read.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, on paper. All right, motion carried. And I think I did what I did a couple of months ago. We reviewed the minutes, but we didn't vote to accept it with corrections. So, we need to step back to the review of the minutes from the previous meeting. And do we have a motion to accept with corrections?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes with corrections.
All right, Brenda made the motion.
I'll second it.
And John seconded. On paper. All right, motion carried. Caught myself that time. All right, no, uh, standing committees, special committees. We'll have to forego the, uh, update on road work.
There hasn't been any on Dean's Ferry yet.
Yeah, I don't know what, uh, what, what the schedule is. We don't speak to talk to him about it. But I do want to say one thing about the roads. I don't know who did it, but the, uh, grass was cut around the welcome sign on Carolina Road. And I don't know who did it, but I appreciate it.
Yes, 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 it looked good, and I understood too.
But I think it was the county, they also came down Copper Hill and Dean's Ferry.
Uh, they didn't cut this.
No, this was cut close.
This is, uh, they've, they've cut through there before, but they don't go anywhere close to our sign. But whoever did it, cut around the sign, uh, and I think it was John David.
Not them.
Yeah, but anyway, I just want to let it be known, and I appreciate it, because it, looks a lot better.
I'll buy this shot a hole in it, yeah.
No, I'll buy their history today.
Where's the wood?
Oh, Father, on the subject of road work, um, you know, we discussed putting that second load, pressure run on this out here. It's ready for it.
Okay.
Do I have permission to finish that?
Well, it was something we've already talked about.
Okay, so I did.
Just, you know, as a continuation
Okay.
of road repair on Town Street. So.
And the signs are, uh, on Dean's Ferry.
Okay.
I paid for them. They were like $160 installed.
Did he get the town limit signed by chance?
Supposed to have gotten both of them. I haven't lived down that far, but according to Tanya, Tanya, they are installed and.
Okay, very good.
Yep, completely.
So that, uh, and that list is under, under old business.
That's always, okay.
And under old business was the budget that I had, uh, started working on several months ago. Gave you copies of it. This is what, I really didn't make any changes to this. I do expect that our annual income this year is going to be less, uh, to continue the downward turn, uh, that started last year. So that's why the budget of mine is about, my projections for the budget this year is across the board 15% less than, uh, last year. And it may be, that may be a little bit too generous, uh, but we'll go with it for the time being. Yeah, uh, if you have any questions, just let me know. And otherwise, I'm gonna go line by line.
So the, the total budget is? If that's the last column?
At the last column is the, where the different accounts, uh, the grade or the grade out areas is what I project. The fiscal year 2021 ending balance to be
To be, okay.
And, uh, the very bottom line is a total of all accounts. The only one that's, uh, will probably change, uh, because I haven't factored any, any of the road work that we expect to have to pay for on, uh, Smith Mill and Dean's Ferry, not Dean's Ferry, Copper Hill and Smith Mill. So, uh, we may have to make some adjustments to it later on, once we get those totals.
And that will come out of Bleach account?
Probably moving Blount Ford, Blount, uh, moving Blount County Ford account.
I, I have, just have a deposit that goes in, that will go in tomorrow for 670, I believe it is, 670 that will go on that.
Right, uh, yeah, if we, you know, we can take it out of, uh, the rebuild Alabama or, and or moving Blount County Ford. Uh, I, I would, since we're restricted on where we can spend that money, I would prefer to use all that on, in the Blount County area.
Right.
Uh, and I use the rebuild Alabama accounts to, uh, pay for everything, or pay for things
Like this.
here in, uh, in Jefferson County portion.
So rebuild Alabama, either one of those accounts is what I can use for the
Yeah.
in Jefferson County, okay. Good.
Any other questions? Only, uh, look it over, and if you have questions, then I'll bring it up next, next time. And like I said, we'll, we will have to make an adjustment once we find out what the, uh, Blount County road repairs are gonna cost us. Yeah. All right, uh, under new business, I have one item. Just a little background, a couple of days ago, the alarm was set off down here. And it was a Jefferson County deputy, he'd come in to use the facility, but he didn't have the code to turn the alarm off. And I came down here and, uh, he'd already left the building, and he was up at the forward stop sign, and he followed me back down here. I talked to him up there. And, uh, he had a key, so he never opened the lock box.
Okay.
So that's why he didn't have the key or the code. Uh, they have the code now.
Right.
And we have to make sure that Blount County gets it too. But, uh, if they have the key, they're not gonna use, not gonna use the lock box. And, so, that kind of depends, putting the code in there.
Well, Blount County has it now, too, so.
Yeah, well, they, they, we just need to make sure that they, they're aware of it.
Yes, yes.
But in, in talking to the deputy, he asked me if we had a microwave. I said, no, we don't. So, you know, whatever, a microwave is not on cause that much. You can probably find under, under 150, if not about, under 100.
Oh, yeah, something that's saying it, or Amazon.
But I would like to have the council permission to purchase a small microwave to add, to have in down here, so the deputies can use it. Anything to get them to come, you know? And I told the deputy, I said, we really do want y'all to use this.
I make a motion that we stop on, and I'll say the.
All right, Brenda's made a motion, and Merle has seconded. On paper. All right, uh, let's put a cap of $150, but I believe we can get it for less.
Okay. Should I look to Amazon, or should I look to, should we look there?
Let me check Amazon price, uh, and then I'll check, uh, Walmart, just kind of that.
Walmart.
They got Prime Day 21st, 21st, 22nd, two, two for Prime Day.
Yeah.
When Prime, Prime Day on Amazon?
Yeah, Prime, Prime Day is 21st, 22nd.
Well, I have a Prime, I'm sure you did too.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the town has eight, well, we don't have, the town doesn't have Prime, but I do.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I did too.
Can I make a suggestion? Walmart has a 1,000 watt microwave, 75 bucks, Hamilton Beach, it's nice, I'd be sure of buying one, just so you know.
Yeah? Okay? Time, time, fine. All right, um, all right, uh, next item I have, uh, Lucy, you still got the pictures over there?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a request for a waiver of mobile home age, uh, to be moved in to Tana County Line. And these are some pictures, if you have not already seen them
I've already seen them, I love them.
of, uh, the interior. Unfortunately, I didn't have the exterior when I had those prints, so they're not printed. But I will, Lucy did send those to me.
Yeah. I can get them printed when I go to, to Spain, so I'll get them off my phone.
All right.
So I'll have them in the file.
Well, I just, I just forward the, I will forward them to all the council members.
Okay, okay.
But, uh, if anybody wants to look at them, she does have them on her phone.
You need to look at them, you know, anybody?
Lucy forward them, to Lucy forward them, not the outside.
But I, I and she sent those to me, and then I, I sent them to the council.
Okay.
I have one email, and it sends it to everybody.
Yeah, okay.
And I will resend those to you if you didn't get them.
Yeah, uh, I had to reboot my computer
Okay.
because it hadn't, wasn't coming up, and, uh, but I'll send them to everybody afterwards. But, uh, all right, uh, we have the written inspections for plumbing and electrical. And according to the, uh, ordinance, let me let me get, uh, open this thing up. Okay. Actually, under the, uh, mobile home ordinance, under sections 3G and 3H
3H.
uh, outline the requirements for inspections, uh, when seeking a waiver for the age limit for mobile homes coming into town. All right, does anybody want to review the, uh?
Does anybody want to review these?
Yeah, you can just pass that around and, uh, take a look at it. What is your actual age in the mobile home?
What is the age?
What is the actual age of the mobile home?
Actual age?
OT.
18.
Oh, OT is 2002.
Oh, 2002. 18, okay. All right, any questions or comments on inspection?
We've seen all the pictures. Um, the mobile home looks like it's in, still in good shape.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we waive the age factor.
Well, waive, waive the
Waive the age requirement. And if that's the, um, inspection.
All right, so we're going to, uh, make a motion to approve the waiver for mobile home age. approve the waiver for mobile home age limit for, uh, Brian and Jennifer Morris.
Yes.
All right.
Are the floors good and steady and get some more?
And I want a new floor, so we got the land to come out today, give me a price on a new floor, something different. And he's gonna put it in once it's moved. But yeah, girl.
You've had some good looking wood in part of it.
It is, I'm just tired of it.
Oh.
It's just older, and I'm just tired of it, all from the deeper.
Well, I, I was told, you said you were gonna give it a bath when you got it up here.
Yeah, yeah.
Before you leave it.
We're actually gonna put siding on it. We're gonna get the electric in it while we live it here, but we're gonna, um, put siding on it. We went and looked today, do something different once we do that.
And what type of roof is it?
Shingle.
It's a shingle roof, or maybe, or like a house.
Yeah, it is a roof.
Well, I, let me say, I appreciate you being so diligent about working with us.
Oh, I appreciate that.
And, uh, and let me be the first to welcome you in County Line.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I hope that, I think you're gonna be a good neighbor, Mr. Blackman.
We'll try.
And thank you, Mr. Blackman, for being so cooperative.
Yes, I do appreciate that.
And for your work on the road, we thank you for that. We'll get it, I'll, I'll get with you this week.
We need to check on about that, uh, runoff too.
Yes, I'm, um, Mr. Mayor, there's an issue about where the, where the pavement and the gravel comes together there, it's, the pavement is breaking off, and so it's creating a drop off when you turn in.
Uh-huh.
And the lower vehicles could drag, you know?
Yes, it's worse.
It, it's getting worse, so if the, if the, uh, if Block County could throw us some asphalt there and bring that.
It's coming Jefferson.
Jefferson County, excuse me, if they can bring us some asphalt right there to taper that off on their part, then when we get the gravel on there, he will drag that up to it. And make it smooth.
Okay.
It was done several years ago.
Do, do I, or does Steve need to be the one to contact the highway? Or that, Kaiton?
You know, I think we might want to check with Zach.
Okay.
Kind of pointed to contact.
Okay.
Um.
So, okay.
I think that might be the.
All right.
Best thing to do. Uh, but. Yeah, I imagine it. Yeah, it's, well, it's been a long time since they paved that area, and, uh, needs to be patched, needs to be patched. Yeah, all right, we have a motion to approve a waiver for the mobile home age in accordance with the mobile home ordinance. All right, we had a motion, Brenna made a motion.
Second.
All right.
John seconded.
All in favor? All right, motion carried, the waiver has been approved.
Welcome to County Line.
Yes.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Glad to have you on.
She made a motion, I'm sure.
All right, uh, that is all I have on my agenda for tonight. Uh, I hoped, had hoped that we would, uh, be entertaining, or at least reading the first instance of the ordinance that establishes all the municipal boards and dictates, uh, how long, you know, the length of service and appointment procedures, things like that. But I don't have it yet, so I have to carry it over to the maximum.
Oh, may I make, make a suggestion that we do a forum for the nuisance ordinance, that when someone does give me a complaint, they could just, we could put it on that forum to present to the council?
Yes.
I can't.
We'll cover something.
I, I came up with one the other day, when I was just fooling around with it, and I'll send it to you and let you.
Okay.
See what you think.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Something simple.
That'd be a good, that's a good idea, because, uh, when you need minimum information. Where it is, do you know the owner? Uh, property owner, or?
Right.
Is it owned, rented? Now, there's much information we can get.
Right, okay.
But identifying the nuisance, number one.
Well, this will be something to start with, and we'll tweak it from there.
All right, yes, uh, that sounds good. All right, uh, council, have anything else before I ask the floor? All right, anybody from, anything?
I have a, uh, what's the standard for the, uh, the building, the, uh, new building?
Oh, you, you're talking about the storm shelter, or the safe room?
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, well, we have submitted our application, and the drawing is back there on the back bulletin board that, uh, shows the building and its dimensions, et cetera. Uh, we have submitted it, uh, we, we had to submit it to the state of Alabama, Alabama, uh, put all the applications from the state, and then submitted them to the federal government. Well, that's still being looked at. We're, we're expecting an answer, as they said on the website, late summer. But that could be, you know, I was hoping to hear something this month, but, you know, to be honest, they were flooded with applications. They had, uh, something like five hundred million dollars available to award as, as grants. But the application value that, uh, applied for the various programs was four and a half billion dollars worth of applications. So, um, a lot of stuff go through, uh, but I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, huh, I'm hopeful. I got my phone in the closet, and I really, uh, we are considered as a impoverished community, so we get a few extra points, uh, and it saves us a lot of money too. Because it's a, uh, being an impoverished community, it, uh, instead of having a twenty-five percent match, we only have to come up with ten percent. And the estimate for this building back there is large enough for two hundred and fifty-six people. So that's a big building, and it's a big safe room. And it's gonna be seven, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. Mm-hmm. Hey, if, uh, if we get that, it's gonna go right out here, right next to us, and, uh, may have to use gravel for the parking lot, uh, but we'll work on another grant for that later. But right now, you know, we're just sitting and waiting. Um, we, this is our second attempt at it. Last year, we were not selected, have no earthly idea why we were not selected. They don't tell you. Uh, and they wouldn't even tell us where we ranked in the applications from the state. So, anyway, it's, uh, just wait and wait.
But, of course, this will be a multi-purpose building. This will be something that can be used throughout the year, not just.
Yeah, it's, uh, the intent, this is gonna be a multi-use building. Primarily, its primary function is a safe room, but we're gonna be using it as a town hall, uh, you know, meeting room, uh, wedding reception, you know, whatever, uh, uh, we can use it for. But its primary purpose is for a stone shelter, so it's gonna be built to withstand two hundred and fifty hour, two hundred and fifty mile an hour winds. So, anyway, uh, we're still just waiting, anxiously waiting. Yeah, anything else? Yes, sir?
Uh, I want to be the first one to put it out, I guess, on the, uh, on the uses.
Yeah.
The ordinance and the safety issue concerning the intersection of Cobrasale and.
Okay, uh, Lucy, as soon as you get a form, you want to, to, curse and let him fill it out?
I will, soon as we get, I'm gonna make a motion here.
All right.
Place is so overgrown now, that you pull up off of Cobrasale onto Dings Ferry, you have to really be careful about pulling out there now, because you can't see.
That is a safety issue, and we might, uh, have, uh, contact Commissioner Washburn, say we have a safety issue, and to cut it down. Uh, Strickland did that once, for us.
The ground right there on the corner is like over five feet tall.
Yeah.
And when you pull up there, you, you have to pull out partway in the road before you can see if anything's coming.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, had gotten bad before, and, uh, Commissioner Strickland at the time.
Cobrasale, yeah.
Cut, uh, cut it out.
Almost popped several times coming out there, so I had no problem putting my two cents on it, I'll call and nick if I need to.
Okay, because that, that is a safety hazard.
Oh, that's a safety hazard for all parties.
Yeah.
Especially the clowns that come through there at night that, that don't pay a bit of attention, especially with flashing red lights, you know, coming in or out. You know, it doesn't, doesn't make any difference, we can't really see, because half the time, their headlights are like pin lights, so.
Yeah, well, we'll have to contact Commissioner Washburn.
I'll take Commissioner Washburn's office about that thing, uh, just tell them that we need it cut down.
Well, it needs to be cut back, so people can see.
Cut back where it can be, where it's safe.
Yeah.
To a safe.
I don't think that property has been moved this year.
And they were supposed to have moved.
There's parts of it that have been moved, but that corner line, and, I mean, it's over five feet tall, I've been stood up all year.
Now, that section is not trifer, is it? That's not a trifer section, is it?
Not occupied, too, yeah.
Yeah, uh, they may be, since we have had it cut before, they may be waiting on us to cut it again.
Uh-huh.
But, uh, I would, uh, instead of cutting it, I think we ought to wrap a chain around it and remove it. And wrap a, wrap a chain around it, and hook it up to a truck, and remove the issue. Anyway, all right, uh, anything else from the council from the floor? Okay.
Make a motion with adjourn.
I'll say it.
All right, Myrle has made a motion to adjourn, John has seconded it all in favor. All right, motion carried, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate you coming and, uh, being with us tonight.